Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. Today is our legally counted commissioner meeting, Monday, September 30th. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise, follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. Before we approve the agenda, it has kind of brought to my attention that the agenda that was in the Star News did not include the H.A.S. design at, I believe it was at four o'clock. So I just want to notify those online and the public that we will not be discussing that today. It will be postponed probably till next week.
Mr. Chairman, actually, it's going to be at least thirty days. We're trying to find another date for that to be heard.
Okay. So, in other words, that's not on the agenda today. So those folks coming in for that will be notifying now. And I don't think there was anything else to change on the agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. We approve the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
A motion in the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey Doug, can you try and not do that on October 28th?
Okay.
Our next agenda items and action items are claims, border claims, junior college. Rita, welcome, good to see you back. And I know we had one junior college that was verified. And I didn't have any questions. You guys have any questions on claims?
I went through it all and I was, I was good.
So I'd entertain a motion. Oh, wait a minute, there is one mistake.
Two.
Two mistakes. We have a bill for, remember which one it is?
Xerox Financial.
I don't remember the claim number for, at least for a machine we don't have anymore. Rita's taking that out of the bills. And then I put in a claim for my mileage since February and so forth, and I did that wrong. And so we're going to adjust that debt number down.
Yep, it'll take about twelve hundred dollars off the total claims.
So it's, I don't do them soon enough. So there's a little bit of change in my claim and the one for the Xerox lease that we don't have that machine anymore. As so you're aware. Now I would take in a motion to...
I'll make a motion that's approve the claims, border orders, and junior college tuition with those two items removed.
A second.
A motion in the second all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. My motion carries.
Welcome back Rita.
Thanks, I brought you blackberries and you're not here.
Sorry. Put them in the freezer.
He's going to give them to me, it's okay.
I probably have a couple more bags of them in the freezer, so I'll give them, I'll give them to you and I'll bring some more for you.
Blackberries from your own place?
Yeah.
Oh wow.
Blackberries, I'm not wearing the raspberries.
I've been eating fresh blackberries off all the vines that are over here or growing everywhere.
I'm writing some up.
Really good right now. It's a mix, what's the word, I can't read it, writing it out.
How long you been writing your name?
Little handicap here. These over here, tank, tank, tank.
Come on, come on, come on.
He wouldn't ask for it.
I'll rest for the weary.
I'm going to become chairman, I may have me a stamp.
Okay.
You have to do a really nice signature because that's it for life.
Oh yeah, it ain't very nice right now.
Hi, sweetie.
Hi.
Thank you. Rita, do you mind taking these down, David?
Thanks Rita. Have a good day. We're going to keep running going. We got a lot on our agenda today. First one up is elected officials report. I'm assuming Dave you're going to handle for the sheriff. Or Kevin? And the first one is the sheriff and he has an action item. Good morning.
Yeah. Which one do you want to do first?
We could do the nine one one, we've already looked at that.
Okay.
So give us a brief synopsis and then we'll...
It's a nine one one grant that they're purchasing laptops and some switches and stuff for dispatch.
It was forty...
Forty... Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand.
Two fifty-eight.
Okay, everybody understand that one? Need a motion to approve? Make a motion, we approve the nine one one grant out of public safety.
A second.
Motion in the second all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The next one is a contract with the Department of Health and Welfare for process service.
For their...
And that's a standard one we do every year.
Child support paper, stuff like that, the thing you've served in the county.
And I don't think there's any cost or anything, is there?
Yeah, they, they're, they're charged, there's a cost matrix on the, attached to it.
Was there? Let me just look one of that, what was that?
The contract, total amount for the contract is fifteen hundred.
That wasn't much. I don't see it here. Fifteen hundred. Everybody good with that one? If so, I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
I would move that we approve, approve the grant with Health and Human Services.
Second.
Had a motion to approve the grant for the Department of Health and Welfare.
Health and Welfare, sorry.
For process service for child support program, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
And then you have Sergeant Turner to give a quick waterways report.
Okay. Welcome Kevin. All right, Commissioner.
Morning. Just wanted to give you an update on the boat that we got the grant for. That is in process right now, they are building it. It's in waiting to get painted right now and then they'll finish up the inside and we should have it by springtime.
Nice.
So that's going good. The other update is for the big custom well boat that had the motor go bad on it. I got the final bid for that. It committed just under forty-three thousand, it's forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars for a new motor.
Is that a board?
It's an outboard.
Outboard.
And that includes the install, all the new electronics that go with this new motor, so.
I think we have that in waterways.
Yes, we do. So, and I'll pass that through the advisory committee tomorrow and we'll move on with that.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to give you a quick update for stats for the year since water is over as of today for IDCR. We had four hundred and fourteen calls for service on the water. Two hundred and twelve of those were traffic stops. We wrote sixty-three citations, seven of which were misdemeanors and four of those were OUIs. We had fifty-five incidents where we either towed boats or accidents. We only had four accidents this year that were reported. We had nineteen hundred and twenty-nine boat safety inspections, which is up almost two hundred and thirty over last year. And we did most of that with four guys on the water this summer.
And that's both lakes?
Wow.
That's both lakes. So we had a total hours that were worked on the water of twenty-nine hundred and two hours between basically four guys.
Oh goodness.
The paramedics did a bang up job this year.
Motorized in non-motorized areas like up past North Beach or any of that?
I have to look back on the stats on that. I know we did quite a few warnings for the no wake zone. I do know they wrote two citations for it for up there and they were both in McCall, so.
Any injuries out on the lake?
We had one broken leg. I think that was the only one as far as injury. No, we had a person get cut with a prop. But it wasn't nothing major.
Hopefully minor, so.
They were okay.
So we got lucky.
Kevin?
Yeah.
What do you think we could do to help you boost your personnel next year? If you only had four people, it's becoming harder and harder to fill those roles.
Well, we did, towards the end of the year, we hired two more and they will be coming back next year. I've already got commitments from two of them. So we got four coming back on putting two through Marine Academy next spring. So we're, I think we'll be looking good next year with already four coming back, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
Is the Marine Academy kind of like post?
Yeah, it's a...
Is there a cost?
No, there's no cost.
Okay. We have a meeting in the morning. Good.
That's all I got.
That's good. Tell the guys thanks for their help, it was a lot of work.
I will. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we're going to move on down to department heads. First one up is Yolanda.
Stop it. Don't use these stories anymore.
See, I told you it was going to go public, it's out there now.
That's hilarious. So I have the contract for the alternative surveyor. The alternative surveyor contract is to allow Ralph Miller with C S Engineering to do alternative reviews of Platts. And there might be a conflict of interest potential. It did go through contract review. His fee is listed on the last page, page twenty-five.
And that was a hundred dollars per hour plus one dollar per mile per vehicle.
What, is this in our packet?
Yes.
What's it called?
Should have been.
No, it's not in our packets, send it to the...
I just sent it to you again because Alex said he didn't...
It should be a separate...
Oh, here he is.
And, and our present surveyor is Dunn Electric...
Dunn Land Surveyors.
Land Surveyors. And is...
So when they do a Platts, we have to have an alternate to do their Platts.
Surveyor look at it.
Right, and we've never contracted with them before and now we are going to do that. He came in and signed it, so it is ready for signature.
Excuse me, what was wrong? Any more questions for Cindy on the second surveyor contract?
I don't.
You know, I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Valley County Surveyor Contract.
Second.
Who's in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries and we all sign this one?
Yes. And then Doug, you want to take that?
Sherry, is the weather pretty nice over there?
Yeah, it's beautiful. It's been sixty-three, sixty-five. It's cool though because the wind's been blowing that, you know, right off the ocean. So definitely wearing a little more clothing.
So to continue my report, I don't know if legal counsel wants to comment about it, but they did a notice of seasonal road closure to allow people, as a notification that the snowmobile room trills are closed.
Oh.
It's called a notice of seasonal road closure. It's for Warren Wagon Road, no business, High Valley, Clear Creek, et cetera. And I'm going to ask my co-compliance person to go ahead and send this notice to people that this may impact on private property, just to give them a heads up before they start doing building plans and that type of thing.
So does it say when, how long it's going to be on all winter or is it going to go off here in a month?
It's according to the code.
Well, does it...
According to the code.
Programing begins when there's approximately eighteen inches of snow and continues through the winter and spring months until the road is deemed safe.
So this just, this just affects areas that they could be building out past the tracks and walls.
Yes, we don't end up with another no business situation.
Yep.
This is in conjunction with Valley County Ordinance five dash five dash three. It's already an ordinance, we're just letting people know what the ordinance says ahead of time.
So they're aware of it.
So I'm assuming like a Clear Creek would be DF?
Yes, and there's, there's a few others up there that have private property. And we're just, we're just looking at a map and trying to pick out the people that might be affected and we'll send them the notice.
Are you going to mail that to these people or... Yeah, okay.
Yeah, legal wrote it up. It's just one pager. I did go to that floodplain conference, which was really a good floodplain conference if you want to combine good with floodplain. It's usually they're so boring, but this one was really pretty good and interesting. But one of the key points I picked out of it was in order to get an FHA loan starting in January of twenty twenty-five in a floodplain, the manufactured, on a manufactured home, it has to be at or above the base flood elevation.
They got to build it up before they can set it.
Yeah, it has to be on dirt, it can't be elevated. But that's going to be impactful.
So they can't put in like a foundation, a four foot wall? It has to be on dirt. And let the water under that.
And this will take place in January of twenty twenty-five. That will, I mean, it doesn't really impact Valley County because we don't allow structures in the floodplain unless they were platted and we imposed the floodplain upon them. But it's very interesting for impacts to affordable housing, workforce type housing. A lot of people, you know, build those pieces within those areas. A long time ago, you told me I could get signs made and I've been working with Rocky Mountain Signs, you know, for the big picture signs and I picked out a couple of them, emailed them to him and he said he needs to scan them directly from the photo. I'm going to try to remember to drop them off tomorrow. I just want to let you know that I'm still working on that.
Are they black and whites or are they...
They are. I picked out just a couple to start with because we really don't know what's going on with this facility, if we have wall space at the other facility and those types of things. There's a couple that are really cool.
Are they going to be like these hard pictures out here? They're not the plastic cardboard, it's more of a harder...
It'll be like the ones in the hallway. I mean, I'm only, I'm not doing super huge ones. I'm doing that one that shows the Big Creek Road with the little car coming around the big rock. It's a pretty cool picture, so.
Good, good, I think that's important.
There's no wall space.
At the other place? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll not get too many for here then.
What, what's the purpose for them?
Make our hallways interesting.
Oh, just put some art on the walls?
Yeah. It was approved by the board.
We could put an elk head or deer head or something like that.
We could, we could. I could paint the walls for you too.
Yeah, I sure you could.
Cindy, I noticed that ITD has not put up the building permits required on our entry signs.
I know, and I'm trying to get a hold of Mike because my understanding was the guy was there putting them up and I don't know if they put them up and somebody took them down. Or if, if he was saying that he was getting them ordered right now and the guy was there looking at the sign to see what they needed. I, that's kind of what I think is somebody was at the sign, looking at the sign and that's what he was saying and that he'll get those ordered.
Okay, because I noticed they're on the entering Boise County sign on the other side of the road.
Yeah, behind the tree.
Yeah.
Behind the tree.
Exactly.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so I, I have, I've been in contact with him, well, I'm emailing him and he hasn't responded back. But he, in one email, he told me that he had to get them ordered. So I think that he probably was saying the guys there at the post looking to see sizes and making sure of what I wanted. Yeah, still pursuing that. And then I want to give a big accolade shout out to Human Resources, IT, and Buildings and Grounds. Because right after you... I'll shout at you later. Because right after you approved the budget, he got in a position and we have someone hired. IT has a computer set up and Buildings and Grounds brought us a desk. And she starts tomorrow in the Planning and Strategy Department. So it worked very quickly, very smoothly, no problems.
Can you give us a name?
Anna Smith. And she'll be starting tomorrow morning. I'm going to spend some time with her before I leave to my planning conference. And then Human Resources will be doing her onboarding and IT will be doing their portion. But, I mean, they've all been very, very responsive.
She's sort of taken over Todd's position?
Well, we're straightening out what positions will be doing what. She'll be more in-house, he's going to be more outside. They will work closely together, she will work very closely with Lori on notices, that type of thing, more office. And she will be the permit technician. She'll be doing the short-term rentals, ADUs and all that stuff. And organizing that. Well, continuing that because Todd has it very organized right now. Anyway, I just wanted to give them a shout out because it went very quickly and painless, it was painless.
Painless, huh? That's good.
This is always good.
All right.
Anything for me?
I think one of these days here soon, we all need to get together and talk about our meeting Friday morning.
Oh yes.
And maybe bring this thing to a head, one way or the other. If we get time on an agenda next week or two, let's try and plan that.
I will be there when you set it, I'm not taking, I have conference this week and I think the third week of October, but I'm not missing any meetings.
Do we want to do that as a work session?
Yeah, we could do it in a work session. I think it probably should be out in the public and exposed to recording. Be honest, be just and fear not. Okay? All right.
Well, let's have a work session. We gave them some, you know, goals to accomplish, so I think we need to recap. But, I mean, it's on their plate at this moment in time, right?
Yeah, but I, I think we need to put some tighter dates on it personally.
Okay, well, let's do a work session and discuss that, yeah.
Okay.
I got to step away for just a minute, you guys go on, I'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to move, thank you Cindy, have a good day, good luck at the dentist. We're going to move on down. Net has sent an email this morning that sees this swamp was unable to make it, so we're going to move to court services, DeeDee. Good morning.
Me being here today, I was deciding that it's been about six months since I've been in this position. I have some tiny regrets, but moving into policy and procedure mode, which is not my jive. So next what I'm looking, looking at is working on all the policy and procedure. In doing so, a couple of things, I have been able to meet with the misdemeanor probation departments down in Canyon County and Ada County to get a good idea of kind of what they do, how they flow. Let's just see if there's anything that we need to do better or be able to make sure that we are solid at what we do. And for the most part, we are solid at what we do and in conjunction with other, other departments. I still want to do a visit up to Blaine County. Blaine County is most like us, about the size of us and kind of what they're doing. So I'm trying to figure out how to do that. They've been wanting a training from me as well, so I might try to put it all together so it's not just a trip over there and back for one thing. In those meetings, though, I do want to give a, give a shout out. Not that I was asking how's our department doing, that did not come out in a question because they are one, Blaine, Canyon, and Ada are our biggest partners. We do the most transitioning of cases between them and drug testing between all of them. But they shared that Molly and Jacques are incredible to work with. They've been so thankful to be able to, easy to work with, great to communicate with. That was so nice to hear from them. We have a juvenile probation review. So part of juvenile probation standards is they do go around the state and review the departments to see how they're doing, make sure they're up on policies, whatever the standards are. I got to be a part of that design of what that looks like many years ago. So this is the second review that we have had, this will be the first as director. And I know there was some things that were to be done previous that had not been completed, so I'm sure that that's going to be on my list to complete. So that's going to happen October twenty-first. That we're going to have some administrators come up and review and audit our department for juvenile probation. It'll also be very beneficial for the new hire because we can go through the cases as well as policies just to make sure we're doing stuff that's kind of, one, gives us our discretion within our county, but also follows the standards. So that's coming up. Those are the things I'm not excited about because I know there's going to be more policy I'm going to have to do after that as well as procedure. I have been invited to Washington DC. They're from, there's a, the Juvenile Justice Commission. They've invited seven people from that commission to go to Washington DC. It's the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Conference, OJJDP. They haven't put the agenda items yet out, I would tell you what that was going to be all about. But typically it's the five core responses and that would be make sure it's sight and sound for juvenile stuff regarding law enforcement, racial and ethnic disparities and reducing those as well as status offenses, making sure that they're staying out of detention. So I'm hoping it's going to be a whole lot of ideas on how else to do and work within our communities. Restored justice is becoming a big word again and it's something I've definitely wanted to bring back to this community is getting back out and not just a juvenile, I think I've shared this with you folks before, if they steal a candy bar, for example, from Rite Aid or someplace, then they're trespass from that and they don't ever get to restore that relationship with Rite Aid. They just can't go back in there or they're placed in court or whatever. So there's got to be some things that we can bring back to restoring that relationship with the person harmed or the victim within our community that kids do. It's not in the adult world, it's mostly for juveniles. One, they have to learn to deal with that conflict as well as apologize like face to face as well as fix what they broke within that person and that trust. So I'm hoping that kind of stuff comes back out so I can also bring that stuff back. So that's going to be in November, it's a week long. Also a huge amount of money from the OJJDP is what also helped us establish the assessment center in McCall. Signage, I don't know if you guys have been in our department, we do have new signage right when you walk in. I kind of shared it with you guys before, there's going to be a sign that says McCall Police Department and Probation Department to try to get the public to be able to know where they're going to. That's all set up, it looks really nice. And that is it, sirs and ma'am, any questions for me?
No, I'll try to come by maybe this week, look at the signs, check it out, because that's always been an issue.
Oh, good, okay, yeah, I'm hoping it works so far. When I looked before I left on vacation, they said it seems to be helpful. But, you know, when you come in and you make eye contact, you know, you can't not have that. They're going to make contact with the person right in front of them and that's the McCall Police Department. But they'll be able to point at where they can see the sign and be able to direct. It's easier. And that would happen even if we had someone sitting at the desk, they still make eye contact with that first person.
Did you ever get all your doors lockable, all that security?
Yes, our outer doors are with a badge.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing is I did get a, a new computer. The Juvenile Justice Council purchased me a laptop. I've been using my personal laptop all these years whenever I'm out of my office. The reason that the Juvenile Justice Council purchased it for me is part of our three-year plan back in two thousand and eighteen was for me to design the family engagement curriculum and be able to teach it around the state. And my little computer, every time I go to a, a conference or teach or something, they sometimes don't have a computer for me and I can't put in a flash drive in our computer or put it in anybody else's, so I just use my own. And so with that, they purchased one so I can use a computer to go do that around the state. But then I can also use it for work-related things, I can be weeks, I only have a desktop at the moment. And it's in the IT budget to get us all laptops. But it's something that I can use as well as be able to teach around the state and not have to worry about a flash drive.
Yeah, that's kind of important.
Yeah, so I appreciate there was a, almost nine hundred dollars that somebody else paid for.
Hey, any questions for DeeDee?
I'm good.
Sure, you're muted.
DeeDee, did you, uh, make sure that Jeremy approved everything that's on that computer before you connect to our network?
Uh, I haven't even opened the box yet, um, but absolutely, I will be following through with Jeremy, I'm not, I have no intentions of connecting this computer to our network. It's just gonna be offsite, because most of the things I need to access are web-based. And so I won't worry about the networking until, I think they're, they're purchasing our department new computers at some point that are, um, uh, laptops that have a docking station.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Righty, thank you, have a great day. Uh, Extension Office, Melissa and Allison. Good morning.
I'll have Allison report out to the 4H program.
Okay, good morning, Allison.
Good morning. Let's see updates, we had a successful recognition night for all of our volunteers, it's a good way just to thank about eighty people showed up and made him dinner. Uh, we had a successful fair review. Kind of a good thorough year in the review, what worked, what didn't. Nothing like Frank Talk thoroughly set the record straight, so it was very helpful. A lot of good input and suggestions. Also, um, because of the auction, we received enough money donated to 4H to have an AmeriCorps for a full year again. So this is awesome, it's completely paid for and matched with AmeriCorps and the state 4H program. Um, so Amy Ruiz is gonna be up in
Good, good, good.
Yeah, in McCall again, helping us extend our programming, so, and she'll meet us halfway in Donnelly, and we'll have programming out of the McCall Library and the, um, McCall Elementary School as well, so.
Um, did you get all, everybody beat up as far as the auction?
Oh, we're still waiting for some money, but we're doing amazingly well, I think it's down to twenty thousand dollars out of
Yeah, well, if you need help with that, let us know.
Sure, thank you.
It's not fair to make everybody wait.
Right, right, we do have a standard time for bigger organizations to cycle their check comments through, but it's coming in really well, though, this year, yeah, I know, that's kind of a good
Yeah, pay your bills.
Yeah, pay your bills. Pay the kids.
Pay the kids, that's right. Okay, any questions for Allison? Morning, Melissa.
Good morning, how are you? Excellent.
I think your garden froze last night.
Yeah, yeah, it's time to wrap them up, and, and that's essentially what I'm gonna be reporting on. This week I'll be presenting at the, um, Planning Association Idaho Chapter Conference up in Moscow. And so I'll be presenting on the Peer Learning Network with the Weekend Network, the Weekend Project, as well as the Boot Camp Program. And then I will be, uh, at the Cascade Resource Fair this Saturday. And then next week I'll be presenting at the American Association for Adult and Continuing Learning, but that will be a virtual presentation, I'll be presenting on the Master Gardener Program and how we changed that this year to make it a a hybrid program and made a high-altitude series. And then, uh, the Beyond Vinius Community Garden Closing Day is the end of next week, and so that'll be Friday night. And we'll be wrapping up the garden as well as trying to wrap up some of the construction projects we have, we've made a lot of progress there. I think DeeDee's been able to see, I don't think she's here, but she's been able to see that kind of get plugged along. Um, if you ever, you know, just drive past the McCall Police Station, the annex, take a look in the back, there's a lot of activity back there, so we'll be wrapping up some projects there. Like a hog panel, high tunnel, uh, greenhouse ring. And then, the
Behind the McCall Police Department?
Yeah, with the annex, the Valley County Annex.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then the PPP Closing Day is, um, not this, not the fifth, but the 12th. And then that following weekend, the 19th, I'll have Al's our students coming out to work at the PPP, which is the Cascade Community Garden. And we'll be doing a construction field day there, and depending on the funds, we'll either be trying to put up a hog panel T-post fence, which is like our budget fence, um, or we'll be constructing some more beds, kind of working on a, a depreciation plan for that space, since those beds are about ten years old. And so rather than having to do three beds all at once, we're trying to get the resources to do two beds each year, to be able to incrementally improve that space, rather than be like overwhelmed with, oh my gosh, now it's all, you know, fall under the ground. Getting some information out today for a Farm-to-table Dinner that will be happening on November 2nd at Pica Bakery. And that will support the Wesnetra Montes Food Coalition. And there'll be a fundraising event, so if you want to come to a wonderful, uh, locally sourced, direct-to-consumer farmer dinner, there'll be a social hour in the beginning, where you'll be able to meet the farmers that grew your food, and then you'll be able to sit down and enjoy the food, uh, created by Pica Bakery chef, and we're excited to have them host us.
Did you send us something on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting that together, hopefully today. Um, we're getting the menu, and then I'm gonna create registration tickets. And I spoke with a representative from the Cascade Senior Center, and then I'll be reaching out with the McCall Senior Center and just looking for, um, you know, kind of trying to create a big picture of that puzzle piece to figure out where, um, it might be supported. So that's what I have going on, I did turn in a draft, kind of a bare-bones draft of what the Natural Resource Management Plan might look like. And so, um, just waiting for Commissioner, just the word from the commissioners on, you know, what the plan will be with that plan, and how you want to move it forward, or if you just want to let it stand for now.
Have you sent that out electronically yet?
Um, I sent it to Commissioner Mop, and I haven't sent it out to everybody, but I, I can, and I will.
I think I would.
Okay.
Melissa, did you, did you get my email back? I sent it a couple weeks ago, it says, go ahead and send it out.
Yeah, yeah, I did get that.
If you saw that, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, Cascade Resource Fair, what is that?
It's at the Fire Department, and, uh, the Fire Department is organizing, I think it's the second year they've done it. And it's an opportunity for, um, organizations to be able to come together, for residents to be able to know where they can find different resources in the community, so
As far as fire-related?
No, just, uh, uh, like, any resource, so, um, I'm, I, this will be my first year going to it. And so, um, I don't, I can't give you a real detailed descriptor of what it will be, except for this idea of like, this is where you find people and put faces to names and organizations, and these are the resources that are available to you, community.
So like unemployment, YCAP, that?
McCall used to have it, and it was all of the nonprofit, uh, centers, basically.
Yeah.
Like Ignite Idaho, Rose Advocates,
Oh, okay.
You know, the hospitals, it was any, any kind of a nonprofit, it was invited to that, to the one in McCall, I would assume it's the same.
I, I believe it's similar to that too, but I don't know who's gonna be there, so I can't speak to what resources will be in there.
Have you seen anything about it?
Um, it's in the Cascade Happenings.
Okay.
Did see it there. Oh, and then just a quick question. For the APA Conference, I have a person, he's the past, he was interim president with the university, but he used to work in extension. And so when I go up to Moscow, if I, to save the county, uh, money, he has an extra bedroom. And so, um, they will let me sleep in that bedroom, however, if I take a county car, is it okay for the county car to be parked in a personal?
Sure.
Okay, that's why I just needed to make sure.
Yep, just launch it in front of the Valley Club every night, we're okay.
It's just in a residential neighborhood. Yeah. And I didn't know if that was gonna be palatable, so thanks for approving that.
Yeah, you wanted it.
Okay, that's all I have, any questions?
Oh, we're good.
I think we're good.
Yeah, great job.
All right, we're gonna move right on down the list, Human Resources, Mike, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. You guys are very busy today, so I will be brief. So, uh, anyway, just want to let everybody know, open enrollment for the month is done. We've got a number of people re-enrolled in their benefits, changed, all that good stuff was done, so, uh, anyway, big thanks to Gabby Down in the Clerk's Office for all her help with that as well. Uh, let's see, we are starting three new people tomorrow, you heard about one of them in the P&amp;Z Department. We're gonna be starting a new patrol deputy in the Sheriff's Office, and I'm hoping that we're starting a custodian tomorrow. That one's still, just because, um, Scott Clean's been out for a little while, and it's in his department, I still need to get with him and, uh, confirm that that's all scheduled there. And then, in addition to all the different recruitments that I'm normally recruiting for, uh, last week, I published a new announcement for a snow groomer for the P&amp;Z, or, uh, yeah, Parks and Rock Department. Looking out here, looking at the weather, I think we had temperatures in the eighties last week, and putting out something about a snow groomer, I had quite a bit of feedback from people.
Whoa, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm jinxing the weather and all of that stuff, and how dare you publish a snow groomer job and everything else, so. Anyway, but we're starting to get applicants on that one already as well, so, anyway, that's all I've got today.
So Larry, you, you got personnel for your snow grooming this year?
Well, I'll be available here pretty quick, so. I am not available. I'm telling everybody that. I'm gonna be parked in the Valley Club for the next winter.
Not the county car, though.
I'll be county car, though.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Jeremy, come on up, bud, you're next. Busy morning.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I do have an action item, but, um, real quick, for other than, you know, budget rolling over and getting some stuff renewed and what have you, my biggest, I don't know if you heard, maybe you did or didn't, but our radio building on No Business took a pretty significant lightning strike, so that's been my primary focus for the last
We just made that claim this morning, so we made that claim this morning.
Yeah, we had to have, Zipley had to come fix, they took out Zipley's T1, they had to come fix that. And then we had to get our radio guy from Moscow out here and fix some stuff, and so it's been
And I'm assuming that's lower deductible for any kind of
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about it, it was close enough to the deductible that
I think it's probably best to leave them out.
It wasn't worth it, there's still a few things that we got, waiting on some parts to, uh, fix a couple of small things still, but everything is mostly backup, so yeah, lightning strikes.
At least it didn't get burnt.
Yeah, I'm surprised it didn't take out more than it did, but luckily only a couple of things popped.
Hey, you wanna do your action item?
And then my action item is for the Computer Arts Terrace contract, unfortunately. We saw civil because of some of the things that have happened with the Building Department, and we also still, we track, um, indigent claims in there as well still, and I know the state took over a lot of that stuff, but we still have to I think we saw some open accounts, and we still have to maintain that data, so.
Is that twenty thousand in your budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thought we left some in there for this kind of deal. What's the group, what's the plan, though, eventually to go over to Tyler, or, you know?
Yes, so, um, this next fiscal year, um, I'll start looking again for civil software to replace that. Indigent's gonna be difficult, because there is other software out there for that, and, and, and Clark Miller can correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't know that I don't know what to do about that, because I, it is my understanding that the state took over most of that processing. Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
No, you're correct. So what do we keep track of?
Yeah, so
Correct, the cases, uh, that are still open, that we still have leans on, and we're collecting that money, we still have to make sure that we have a tracking component for that.
Yeah, so it's gonna be difficult, do we, do we buy something to track those handful of open claims, you know, how, how do we handle that? We'll have to
Doug, can we just do that on an Excel sheet?
Yeah, think about it, figure that out next year, for this next fiscal year.
We could do that, Commissioner Mop, and that is gonna take some significant work to convert all that, but that is an option.
Is this, um, twenty thousand, is it? That's not a lot, to do this function, maybe you just want to hang there until the state comes up with something, or something different happens, I don't know.
Yeah. We could, I think it's a pretty small portion of it.
How many cases are on there, Doug, quite a few?
There's still quite a few. The indigent program has been in place for several years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's a lot of lungs out, so.
Right.
Hey, this is an action item, I need a motion to approve.
I would move that Go ahead, Neil.
No, go ahead, sure.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the agreement with Computer Arts for the indigent software and the Sheriff's Civil software.
I'll second that. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion.
Hey, Jeremy?
Yes.
On the tower up on No Business, so how do we make sure that, you know, or, or strengthen our odds that that doesn't get hit again? Do we have lightning rods up there, or how can we secure that site a little better?
It's a, it's all, it's all grounded, and there's lightning protection in place, which is why more, more stuff didn't get taken out. But talking with everybody that has been working on that stuff, this is the first lightning strike that's taken in, since, in anybody's memory, in at least twenty-five years, so I think it was just kind of a one-off, just unlucky thing, so I'm not, I'm not sure if there's much that we could do.
Okay. Knock on wood, will you?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Just go another twenty-five. Do I have anything I need to sign?
I do, and I know that all three Commissioners have to sign this, and so with Commissioner Mop not being here, do we
I, I will just sign it, and we'll all just say, uh, appeared virtually.
Make sure it's an X, Doug, a really fancy one.
Put a smiley face next to it.
Oh man, this is a short line here. Today's, last day of September.
Yep.
Thirty days, watch, snow on the ground.
Yeah, just in case, it's three more.
Neil, I don't like you right now. You better make that sixty or seventy-five. Hitting snow on the fires, though.
Those back here.
They'll look the same. Just in case.
Gonna put an X on a little X figure.
Neil, you can't make our X's look the same. Put curly Q's on mine.
Our writing isn't very good right at the moment. It's pretty ugly. El, Els looks the same all the time. Go between here.
What's the G stem for, El?
George.
George.
I used to think it was gorgeous, but that didn't work out very well.
Grateful, till you looked in the mirror. Gullible, gullible, that would be it. Good God, I don't know, whatever you're gonna say. I was reading through the other day that my name has a noun and a verb in it. Elting. Eng is a road, walking. How many names are like that, I wonder? A noun and a verb.
What is, what is to elt?
To elt?
Elting is, it's too
What is to be or not to be? Not to be very soon.
Do you have anything else for me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a great one. Larry? Parks and Rec.
Morning.
Morning. It's more nothing right now, isn't it?
Ours. First thing, I, I, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to do the signing of the, uh, agreement with IDL, since we've been working on it for over three and a half years.
Yeah.
And this is actually, we did this as a land use permit instead of a lease, because there are trail systems that aren't And this is actually, we did this as a land use permit instead of a lease, because there are trail systems that aren't on here, but they said because it's a land use permit, they can just add them. They're, they're not, there's not going to be any formal thing that they have to do with, uh, downtown. So, I'll bring that to you.
Um, we need a motion to sign this, divided whole land use permit number LU five hundred three oh three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Move the second all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Hallelujah. How many years?
Three years.
Three and a half years that we haven't had a lease up there yet.
Damn.
Last page.
The last page is.
This is with the state?
Yes.
State moves as slow as the feds, really?
Well, you know, there's just so many things involved in it. It wasn't just, the McCall office actually worked really hard to get this done, but then it's also got to go through the AG's office and now they've changed the, well, IDL has their own attorney. One thing after the other. And who's going to put Sherri's X on?
Doug. He's got to attest it too.
I'm going to have a stamp with an X put on it.
The smiley face.
Hey, what else you got Larry while we're here?
So, while we're here, um, a few of us toured the other side of the mountain to look at the, uh, the damage to the fire on the snowmobile trails and I, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, where Sheep Creek starts, um, the one eighty, so basically from the one eighty down to four bit, you know, up here you can see some green and some burning, some green. It's just black all the way down. There isn't anything alive up there. It killed, the root system up there is just, is destroyed. There are giant pond roses that are laying across the road that are dead. There's dead, burned up animals on the side of the road. Um, I called the dog sled people and I told them at this point, I don't think we'll be able to run, uh, that trail system down to Wellington because of the damage. There's, uh, one bridge I, I met with Neil from, um, Gem County, the road department guy, and, and he was showing me, we're on that one bridge. Then when that rain thing happened, it actually moved the bridge about six feet down the river and then the other two bridges are just burned up. There's nothing left. Um, I'm trying to get permission from the Boise, from Cascade District, because I want to take a look at, uh, Cougar Rock. I was told by some of the firefighters, it burned really hot up there and that's a real steep trail. And I want to make sure that it's safe. We want to get all the hazard trees taken care of, get the borrow ditches empty and, and out, just, just so we, just to be clear, when we had the Four Corners fire, you know, they brought the bear crew in, which is supposed to do an analysis and I was told they would go in and do the repair work. The repair work up here has never been done. It was the snoo, the snow groomers that pulled the rocks and the trees out of the borrow pit so that it was passable. Um, I'm going to push really hard with the BFC on Thursday to make some commitments to us. I don't have a lot of faith that they'll come through. I, I would bet Fisher Hasbrock's retirement that it doesn't happen the way we want it to, but, sorry buddy.
And I thought there was some kind of requirement that they had to go in right after a fire.
So the bear crew comes in and does the analysis?
They don't do any repairs?
No, they have another crew that's supposed to come in and do the repair. And I think there was, I think the problem with the Four Corners fire was because, uh, that was a good neighbor authority project. So I think there was a little bit of a communications problem there. It's, there's still stuff up there that has never been done.
Did we get a copy of that bear report?
Uh, you know, I've never asked for one, but I'll ask.
I think that would be worth seeing just exactly what.
I have asked, I've asked every district ranger I've talked to, I have asked the IC commander and the, uh, Rhonda Bishop, who was, was doing the inner, between the Boise and the Payette, that I've let them know that the Valley County Commissioners want to be involved in, uh, the rehab of our mountain systems to make sure everything gets done right.
Absolutely.
If you look at the, I know you guys don't have a lot of time right now.
We're okay.
Okay, so if you look at the Four Corners fire, they didn't take any of the trees out on the upper side of that. You can just see all that stuff up there and dying. And of course, their excuse is that it's because that is, um, a roadless area. But row, in roadless, they can build a temporary road, they got to do NEPA, but they could build a temporary road and let all the locals get up there and cut all that stuff out because there's no value to it anymore. It's, it's gone, but it's great for firewood. And I, in my opinion, it's a lot less money to cut it for firewood than it's going to be to pay for another firefighting crew to come in and fight fires up there. Um.
Larry, I'm meeting with Foltzer's office next week on that very topic.
Yeah, I, I've been reading some of the stuff coming out of his office. I'm, he's, I'm pretty impressed that he's getting as active as he is in it. It just, there's so many things that can be done that aren't getting done and some of it is, I know you guys are discussing MOG in a little while, but, um, so that I don't have to be here. The issue with MOG isn't, the letter by the way is outstanding. It's a great letter. The only thing that bothers me about it is it all of a sudden it becomes another layer of NEPA.
Yep.
And as you know, we can't seem to get anything done as it is because NEPA takes so long. By the time they get the NEPA done and they come out with a draft record or even a recorded decision, it's three years before we start anything. By that time, what you see on the ground isn't necessarily on the ground. So what do they get? They get sued. And so we never get anything done, time after time after time. And so that, that's my issue with, with MOG is it's just another layer of NEPA that's going to slow things down. Um.
And I think that conversation can be had Larry, where it doesn't need to be a full NEPA, but they need to work with their county officials. I mean, per statute, we are their collaborators. And when they don't even come and talk to us at all, that's a problem.
So we have had discussions about other ways to do it, whether it's a CE category exclusion. But when you go to a category exclusion, they can only do two hundred acres at a time. And that is such a little bit of area that it doesn't do us any good and that came out of Washington DC.
And I know Larry, in the roadless rules, we've talked about raising that two hundred acres to three thousand.
Oh, that, that would be.
We're not getting enough stuff done.
No, there's no, you can't.
The other thing I wanted to ask, if you give it, guys, get back up there to clean it or whatever, and you see an old ponderosa that is burned and is down, please take pictures of it.
Yeah, I, I apologize. We got some pictures that I'll be sending you in a little while of some of the, some of the fire damage. When it, things don't usually bother me. When you're driving around and you're seeing rocks roll off the hillside because the root systems are gone that held the hillside together, it's going to, that's going to continue from, for years. When you see dead deer laying alongside the road that their lives are spent getting burnt to death, it just, it, it's pretty emotional. And, and it bothers me because I don't, personally, I don't think it needed to happen. Um, we won't go into that detail right now. Um, I, I would like, I'm going to ask the BFC and the PFC when we talk about fire, because all we talk about is the cost of fighting the fire. But that isn't the cost, that isn't even close. We've got the timber that's lost. We've got the local economies that are affected. We've had no archery season this year. There was a lot of archery hunters come up here. We don't talk about the health, the long-term health effect for residents from those, those fires. And I think that conversation needs to take place too. Um, then we find out last week that out of Washington DC, they told the forest they're not allowed to hire seasonal employees anymore. And that means our, um, winter seasonal employees, our summer seasonal employees.
That's ridiculous.
They want all the money to go to wildfire.
That's what they're making it.
It's, it's going to, it's going to get tough. And I, Dave and I were talking this morning a little bit about, we need to have a little conversation with IDPR and talk about us getting a grant for us to hire seasonal employees and do some of the stuff that the forest used to do and, and isn't going to do anymore. Um.
Well, we need to see what grants are available out there. I mean, if they're, if they're taking it outside of their employee base, there's, they need to take some funding and shoot it to the counties in order for the counties to do this work on their behalf. So, that conversation needs to happen.
Um.
And there's the National Forest Foundation too Larry, that's going to come in at the end of the month. You should be a part of that conversation. I mean, these guys are nonprofits and that's taking it out of the NEPA world, to be honest with you. But, you know, they're bringing twenty-four million, if they get it, in mitigation. So how does that work? Why can't we get twenty-four million to do it?
I've seen, I've been getting those, um, emails from groups of attorneys that want to come in and, and file on behalf of different areas. I mean, that, that, those fires cost the county a lot of money that we don't really hear about.
They're not done costs.
It's not even close to being done.
The lottery issues alone are going to be huge.
Yeah, the, the runoff, the culverts, the, the damage.
The potential, potential flooding to the homeowners below it.
Absolutely. And as I said before, long-term health effects, uh, of the people that live here. Um, anyway, enough of that. Saturday, uh, Friday, Saturday and Sunday were phenomenal at the pickleball court. They had their, um, their tournament up there. They had a hundred and fifty people sign up. It was packed and it was so well-run. I mean, I just kind of stood back and watched a lot of it.
You played?
No, but I didn't see your name signed up either.
I played. One AM, man.
Yes, I was going to say, but it, it went really well.
Yeah.
I think they raised quite a bit of funds and, um, so I'm going to meet with Denise Sabona and, and talk about the next step.
And look at the economic impact.
Oh my gosh, huge, huge. There was, uh, cars from three different states.
Campers sitting out there.
Oh my gosh, it was, it was, I was just really, really impressed how well they did it. I couldn't be more thankful to them. Anyway, do you guys have any other questions? Let's not talk about fire, it just bothers me a lot.
I know, I know.
You're good.
Thank you guys.
Have a good day Larry.
You too. Hope your arm's feeling better.
It's, it's slowly working getting there. I quite get off the top of it, but I'm getting close.
Fisher Hasrick, you're smiling so much. That's got to start affecting.
Hey, light of the tunnel is getting bigger. Mara, you're next. This is Wild, Wildfire Mitigation. You have a whole bunch of agreements.
I do.
Awesome.
Yep, we can go over those at the very end. So October's pretty busy. Um, I actually set up a dump site day with the private forestry specialists, with the Idaho Department of Lands to do assessment of the timber out there on October tenth.
Well, good.
Um, if one of you guys would like to be present, I was going to, um, out, reach out to Scott as well. I just know he was gone for a while, so Scott Klingin to see if he wants to be there.
He's back.
Can also be postponed if you guys, if that doesn't work for you guys and you want to be there. But basically what I've requested is for them to write basically a, a forestry narrative of what the county might need to do out there. Um, but it does sound like, um, truly just access to that back eighty acres is going to be kind of hard. Um, uh, because there's a couple of streams in there, so. Just a little, little back history of that. Um, but yeah, that's October.
Mara, what time is that, do you know?
At nine AM. On October tenth. Yep.
You made that one, Sherri. I have a, a soccer game in Boise that day, October tenth.
I'll forward you the invite.
Okay, perfect.
And then October eleventh and twelfth, um, we are doing our Bring It, Don't Burn It with the county, um, with the structure departments. So we'll have the bins down at the structure departments that Friday and Saturday, and that will be the last one of the year. Um, which is still really a good one, um, pretty proactive the last couple of years. Um, I am getting an assessment of how many loads we've gotten over the last couple of years and how much more we've been getting over the last three years.
Road department, not.
What?
It'll be at the road department, not up on the hill?
It'll be up at the structure, uh, department. So we actually put woody debris bins there so people can hand load their debris, um, right there at the structure departments instead of having to drive them all the way up there. Um.
I think last year was thirteen loads?
Yep. It, there is a lot of loads depending, in the spring, just from McCall, there was twenty-two. So, Donley had thirteen and then Cascade had twenty-five. So Cascade's actually significantly higher than this year, right? The last couple of years has been McCall mainly.
Good program.
It is. It's a really good program. Um, and it's been going on for five or six years now, so. And it's just progressively, people are asking about it. I just talked to the fire departments and people have already been asking when it's going to be, um, how long it's going to be, so. And then October twenty-second, twenty-third, um, is the All Lands Partnership Steering Committee with, um, NFF down in Boise. Um, if one of you guys would like to come, or all three of you, um, but basically that's a in-person meeting that they're hosting and then they're going to be doing a site visit on some of their work that they've completed down in Boise County on the twenty-third. So if you'd like to come to that, I can forward you guys the invite as well. Um, so that's twenty-second, twenty-third. And then it sounds like.
We might need to rely on you on that one.
Okay. And then October twenty-eighth, um, they said that they're going to reach out to the clerk's office to set up a meeting, um, with you guys to kind of discuss, um, the funding, what their plans are with wildfire mitigation. So that is the day that they said they were going to be presenting to you guys.
And I'm out that day, so if they could do it a different day, that would be very helpful.
Yep. I will contact them. And then October twenty-ninth is our fall fire working group, um, meeting, basically to go over what has happened this fire season. I'm, I'm going to extend an invite to the sheriffs, um, to see if one of them wants to come and talk and about how the evacuations went, how we can help them better, how the fire departments thought that the fire season went. So, um, if one of you guys would like to join, I know Sherri, you're not able to, but I can send you guys the invite as well.
Send us the invite.
Yep. And then that's all I've got, is just getting landowners on board to keep on working and do mitigation work. So, um, we have about thirty-five acres up in King's Pine that I'm going to be putting out for bid here, um, in the fall. So I'm going to do that as one big unit and that's going to be the G and A, with the G and A funding. And so I've been working with Brian Davis and he's been talking with the, the ranger from Payette and they're going to try to do a field break on Little Ski Hill. So it will keep some, create some barrier from that twenty acre thick parcel to that subdivision, so.
And Mara, I don't know if there's any way we can work with Adams County on that, but Colby has been trying to get them to do some clearing on Little Ski Hill for years and haven't gotten there. So if we're there anyway, maybe we could do some kind of a collaborative discussion on that.
Yep. Yep, and it sounds like Brian's on, on board with that because he's trying to get them to put that in the new NEPA with, uh, Goosecrick, um, one of their Goosecrick jobs.
I don't want to be a bear of bad news Mara, but I think we've already done a, a lot of firework stuff on Little Ski Hill in the past.
So, uh, maybe on Little Ski Hill, but on King's Pines, we have not.
Yeah, King's Pine we're okay, but.
So Little.
Steph on Little Ski Hill, but I think we've already done a lot of that.
And that's Forest Service?
Well, that's already in, that's in Adams County. I don't think we've done anything in Adams County.
No, I think we have, we have that stuff.
I'll, I'll talk to her. Um, but as far as I know, specifically on Little Ski, Ski Hill, we have not. Um, we've done it on the other side of King's Pine three, I think is what it is, um, that she's conducted a lot of. And that's why I want to do King's Pine one, is because it's adjacent to where she's already done work. So we're truly getting that landscape mitigation on that ridge line, so.
That's a good spot to stop it. Hey, you got an action item? You want to do that next?
Yes, I have a lot of them.
And, uh, you guys have the list in front of you. The last time we did this, we just approved them all at once and then signed them throughout the morning and cut them back tomorrow. And so how you want to do it now? You want to go through each one?
Yeah, I, I read through all of them last night, so, got a lot of them.
So I identified them, most of them to approve them all?
I'll make a motion that we approve the landowner agreements for hazardous fuels reduction. Can we list off the names?
Thirteen of them. Bob and.
Say thirteen. Bob and Walker Barnes, Steve Clements, Randy Geddes, Michael Dennis, Dennis McGee, Brett T and Allison B Mumford, Antonio and Brenda L Tortarico, Tortarica, Hustle Mayor Family Trust, Marcus Colster, Jamaica Costume, Chad McKibben, Mark McKibben and Luong McCall, Troy L and Jennifer L Summers, and Walker Ronald M Trust.
I'll second that motion.
My motion is second to sign the landowner agreements for hazardous fuels reduction. For thirteen landowners, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Great job Mara.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Exciting up there.
You need a stamp too.
I need a stamp. My writing's pitiful.
Okay, we've got about, uh, twelve minutes till our next agenda item, so we're going to commute and take a quick break unless you have anything else.
Nope, that's it.
And then we'll get back to that.